For Wednesday, May 14th. Today, we are having an update from Public Works. Like all of our work sessions, these are for information purposes only. We do not make any decisions here at our work sessions. But if you, but we welcome public comment on the items you hear today. If you'd like to provide public comment, we invite you to attend our 5:30 business meeting and share your thoughts entering our general public section. And with that, oh, by the way, Commissioner Anderson is not here today. She's doing her ribbon cutting for just food, but she will be here at the 5:30 business meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chad Voight, who's got to start our presentation.
Thank you, and I'll get this mic good and close. I know that's always an issue. All right, I'm sharing my screen. Minimize that. Work this. Come on. There we go. Okay, can everybody see my screen? All right, great. Well, thank you for giving us this time to talk about the Public Works Department. Really excited to talk about the folks I work with. We do a lot of fun stuff and we're all pretty proud of our work, so this is a lot of fun. I'm going to jump right into our personnel. We've got 58 full-time employees and we use, we have budget for about seven temporary seasonal employees each year. We've broken them here in an org chart into several teams. Our operations division, which would be our folks in the field are all along the bottom there in several groups. And then engineering, admin, and surveying along the top. And we can talk more about those folks as we go here. I'm going to move right to budgeted funds. We, in our department, we touch seven funds. And the top one there is our most significant one, Road and Bridge Fund. That's a state mandated fund that allows us to receive gas tax. And we also put property tax and other revenue in there. Right below that, we have fleet maintenance and parks and vegetation. Those funds are both within the larger general fund in the county. And those are budgeted funds also. I'm going to hit a little button here and bring the dollars over as we talk. It's more informative. So below then, the parks and vegetation, we've got our capital improvement fund and equipment reserve fund, and then two smaller funds. Those bottom four are funds that carry over from year to year with balances. So they're different than our, those top three, which are budgeted funds. Kind of looking at this for a minute, let's start the bottom because I'm going to remove those here in a second. The special highway and special parks are funds that the state allows us to have that make it possible to deposit certain kinds of funds from the state and other things. We're carrying a pretty big balance in special highway right now. That's tornado reimbursement money, and it took us about five years to get that. We will turn around and show that in the CIP as a transfer to a project and use that money for roadwork. And so those, those two funds at the bottom are kind of minor. The end balances are another topic. The capital improvement fund has a huge end balance right now, 15 million. That's the Public Works side. And the reason for that is that we want to extend Walker Rusa Drive across the Walker Rusa River. We've been planning that for nine years now. And as time goes on, we've slipped on schedule. We've had some other issues, but the county is fully funding that project. And 10 million of that will go away when we are able to build that. And that'll get our balance down to something that's more appropriate. Our equipment reserve fund is right where it needs to be, and we've got a lot of background information we can provide on that. And that'll come up during budget discussions. Let me focus now on removing some of that information, looking at these kind of major funds and expenditures. So looking at what we spent in 2024. And then I'm going to cross tab those. And we've got personnel across the top. And you can see how on personnel, it's split among Road and Bridge, which is a big group of folks. And then two smaller groups, fleet and parks. And so that's pretty easy to explain. Contractual, going across there, the, the big numbers are obviously in Road and Bridge and CIP. Commodities, fleet maintenance has a bunch, Road and Bridge has a bunch. And then obviously, equipment I mentioned. Let me kind of highlight some of those to, you know, look at it in broad terms. These are the big ticket items that basically define most of our budget. So, you know, starting at the right, we bought $110,000 of gasoline. That's for the sheriff, all county departments and all Public Works. 59,000 gallons of diesel, that's mainly Public Works. So fleet maintenance budget is a lot of fuel and it's a commodity. On the commodity side, looking under Road and Bridge there, 3,800 tons of salt for winter, snow removal. And 9,400 tons of asphalt for road maintenance, huge amounts on commodities. That's most of that 1.7 million. And then above that contractual under Road and Bridge, we've got 1.1 million in contracted pavement maintenance. And that's maintaining the existing road network. And we put that out to bid. And in 2024, 1.1 million went to a contractor. And then obviously, the bottom line is equipment. And so, once you kind of isolate those big ticket items, it's fairly a simple budget. It's a lot of money, but it goes fast and it's targeted at some things that are easy to isolate. I want to kind of hang there for one second. The contracted work under Road and Bridge for maintenance on pavement. And the 9,400 tons of asphalt for maintenance on pavement, those are related, but they're different. So we're paying a contractor to do mill and overlay projects each year or something like that. We're also funding our crew that does asphalt maintenance all over the county. So those are two, we're doing maintenance, but it's in two completely different ways, both funded there. Sliding over to CIP projects, part of that 3.8 million is also doing pavement work. And we fund a lot of new asphalt through CIP. So when we start talking about pavement, it's going to be talking about several different funds, several different types of functions, our personnel versus contracted. And we've got a supplemental request discussion started internally and want to look at that.
Chad, I got a question. Do you budget the gasoline or does the sheriff and the individual department say what they think they need? And then you consolidate it?
We use the prior years as our go-by and we, we aim high. And it's been very volatile over the last five years. And so we're doing that for everybody and generally leaving some fund balance at the end of the year. I think one year we went over when fuel went crazy, so. And then asphalt prices, by the way, are affected by that too. So there's a lot of oil in asphalt. So then looking at the, the same kind of cross tab, but switching over to revenue, how did we pay for all that? And I've got some reimbursements across the top that are fairly minor. And then tax revenue is my second line, but let me jump past that. The, the bottom four are funds that we get from outside agencies and reimbursements for grants and things. Recently, we got $1.4 million award from KDOT. That'll show up in CIP projects line where right now you see 343,000 that we had in 2024. So those are the reimbursements, so to speak. So going back to this tax revenue line, what I'm showing here is a number you won't see in any budget documents. It's my exact expenditures in 2024 minus what I know I got from things, what's left. And, and to me, that answers the question, what tax dollars did I actually spend in 2024? And that's good for us internally, just to be aware of and, and keep an eye on. But, you know, as you talk about the broader budget, I think that's a good number to know about. So we've talked about personnel and budget. Let's talk about what we do with all that. I've taken all the work we do and broken it into these groups. And I'll try to give some more detail on those, starting of course with Road and Bridge Maintenance. And I, I've heard that there are 13 counties that still have county engineers on staff. And there's probably a similar statement about Public Works Departments. But what you'll find in every county in Kansas is a Road and Bridge Department of some kind. And their list probably looks exactly like this. And so that work is kind of, it, it goes across all of the counties and is common to all of them. And that's important to keep in mind as we look at the other things we do. If, if there's a crunch in time or resources, I like to remember that this is our core work and make sure that we keep focused on that. And we've done, it's not, it's not my philosophy. We've done that as an organization for years and that's something that we carry on. Looking at what Road and Bridge Maintenance means, it's paved roads, it's rock roads, bridges, culverts. We've got a lot of guardrail, a lot of signs. We mow along all the roads and do we control, dust control on our rock roads? Our snow and ice removal, obviously in the winter. Emergency closures, township road maintenance assistance. We do help townships physically with construction work sometimes. And then of course, to do all that work, we've got a lot of facilities, equipment and materials to manage. So then the second group is Road and Bridge Administration. This is, it's amazing, you know, how much administrative there work, work there is to have a road and bridge system. Particularly in the county side where a lot of things are state mandated or are statutorily driven. Obviously, we have many budgets. We have a lot of contracts for construction or agreements to do things and services. We do a lot of purchasing. Our right-of-way survey records is an interesting one. We've got a room in, in the building that we call the vault. It's got all of our road records, some of those going back to the mid 1800s. And that's something that Kevin, our county surveyor is the keeper of. Right below that are some right-of-way related issues. We need to make sure that we don't have encroachments in those right-of-ways so that they remain for their use. We also control where people can have entrances through an access management system. And then when utilities come in to install, as the state allows them to do, to install lines in our right-of-way, we make sure that we're managing that process too. Other things that we're doing, traffic studies and sign resolutions. We've got several requests right now for stop signs or speed limits across the whole county and including on township roads. Regulatory signs on township roads have to come through this body and have to involve our department. We do a lot of township administrative assistance, bridge and culvert inspections, obviously. And then transportation system planning. I've been over to Johnson County four times this year to look at the east side of our county and to talk with all of the Public Works Directors of the different cities over there about a plan that's in development for where future major corridors might be, so that kind of work. We have a lot of inter-agency agreements, many with Lawrence. We coordinate with state highway projects. I've been working with KDOT for nine years now on the work that everybody can see going on out south. And then at the end of that, obviously, we have a lot of annual reporting. Capital improvements, this is again, kind of like counties with Public Works Departments. Not all counties are going to have a, a capital improvement program, but in a county like ours, it's a necessity. We've got a growing population, increasing traffic, changes in our road systems, development. And so capital improvements are being driven by those activities. And in response to that, our Public Works Department has an engineering division with several engineers and engineering technicians. We're able to plan and design projects internally and draw up the plans. We also hire external consulting help for, for plans, for things that are beyond our capacity or if we're overloaded. Then we put projects out to bid and then we inspect construction when contractors are working for the county. The types of projects we're able to do are listed there, culverts, bridges, road safety improvements, capacity improvements. The bottom one, system expansion, that would be new roads, and that's the Walker Rusa project. We don't do that very often. Another group in our department is our Parks and Vegetation Department. They were separate until many years ago and they were brought into Public Works. Obviously, Lone Star Park has been around a long time. Wells Overlook Park, we've had for decades now. So they manage those parks. Looking at Lone Star, I want to point out that the dam out there is a high hazard dam. And what that means is the state views that as a hazard to downstream structures in the event of a breach or a failure. So there are certain permit requirements that we have to meet there. Luckily, I have some experience from prior jobs with that, so that's an easy one. They also, then the Parks and Vegetation Crew does mowing and vegetation control. They mow all of our road sides. We try to get to all of the county route road sides between one to three times per year on both sides, one mower width wide. We also try to mow out to the right-of-way line on a third to a half of the county each year. But just going around all of the roads one time on both sides would be equal to driving them over to the Oklahoma border and back. So quite a bit of mowing. And at the bottom there, our Parks Department also, the supervisor is our state, not just weed law supervisor. And that's another statutory requirement. We sell herbicide to landowners, again, as mandated by the state. Moving down to fleet maintenance, this is another branch of Public Works in Douglas County. We have a really great facility where our fleet mechanics can maintain all of the equipment that's owned by the county, including the sheriff vehicles. We maintain a wide range of equipment. And when we say maintenance, that's obviously routine maintenance, oil changes, tires, brakes. It's also repairs, wiring, you know, rebuilding things, fixing damage, a lot of hydraulic line issues. If something is a bigger repair that would absorb a lot of time or is beyond our capacity, we send that outside to an outside shop and then manage that whole process. So we put that under fleet administration here as outside repairs. They're also heavily involved when we buy equipment to make sure that we spec it, you know, in a way that they can service that. And as I said, the fleet budget includes all the fuel. And then four years ago, we started maintaining FD1 vehicles and equipment. And we've gotten to the point where we're maintaining most of what they have and they reimburse us directly for those costs. And then finally, I put a bucket list here for additional responsibilities. We get involved in emergency operations. Public Works is part of the emergency operations command process. And we've been involved twice this year on wildfires. We also maintain the recycling drop-off sites. We make sure that the, well, we've gone to Walker Rusa School and repaired pavement. We try to clean up around the dumpsters. We've rebuilt one of those at Vinland. And kind of related, the Douglas Jefferson Regional Solid Waste Plan. Public Works is a partner in that committee that oversees that process. And some specific issues there is that our Public Works Crew, per some agreements, we clean up all of the stuff that blows out of the Lawrence trash trucks on Highway 2440. And we are doing that once or twice a year. We've pretty much landed on twice a year now. Response to development plans, I put that last and there's a whole conversation there. But, you know, the county engineer is listed in the zoning code in many places. And obviously, when developments come through, we have traffic impacts, stormwater impacts. I listed that last and I just did that intentionally. We are not staffed to respond to development and that's part of policy discussion about development. And so I'll just leave that kind of placeholder there for a future conversation. So you can't talk about our department without talking about the county township road system. There are 35 counties in Kansas that operate under this system. Comparing our surrounding counties, Shawnee and Osage are both the same, but Franklin, Johnson, Leavenworth and help me out, Jefferson are not, they are county system. So this was established in Kansas statutes in 1917. The state basically came out and said, okay, counties, you've got to take a role in road system management. We need a network of roads that can go across counties and between cities. And we don't want to rely on the townships. And that's evolved over time to its current status. But basically, the options are you can have a county township road system where the county can take over everything. We're doing the county township road system. We have nine townships. In the late 1800s, we had different townships with different names, but those are the nine we have for a very long time now. So superimposing then, the county roads that we maintain on top of that, you can see we cross all of those townships and we provide sort of a backbone of a road network. And we maintain both paved roads and rock roads within that system. If you were to go back to 1917, when this started, we were probably 100% rock roads. As of now, we're about 85% paved. And so we, we have the Rock Road Crew that grades the roads, but we have a paving crew that works on the rest. And we spend a lot of money on pavement, 220 miles total. I'm going to add the township roads.
Chad, I have a quick question. It's very random, but I was just curious about the one-mile gravel arterial in my mind. When I read these slides, I was trying to search for where that might be in the county. So just curious.
And, and I've lost that tidbit of information at the moment.
It's by no means mission critical. I was just like.
The arterial and collector designation, I was, you know, trying to be very precise here. But the designations are an extension of our federal highway approvals. And they've, they've approved our latest designation. So some of it's a little quirky, but I can find that out and send you a note. So going with adding township roads to this map, and I should have mentioned, by the way, go back a couple maps here. This, this blue, the blue is the state highways, obviously, if you're not familiar with that. So state highways, county routes, township roads. And that's, you know, creates that network and, and that's very valuable. It's, it's good to know that as a county, we need to get people across the county through those townships. It's good for those townships to know they need to get between county routes. And they're a little more bite-sized, you know, challenges for the townships. It's an interesting system because they can choose within that township how they want to maintain those roads. And they can have a lot of interesting conversations about that. There are 64 miles of paved roads in the township system, mainly in Walker Rusa. And when you combine that with our system, it's a lot of road miles, 576 plus our 220. Here's another interesting wrinkle though. The state defines a bridge as anything longer than 20 feet measured along the center line of the road. So obviously, township roads are going to have bridges. And so the state tells us on a township road, we maintain the bridge. And so you can see our 161 bridges here, two-thirds of those are on township roads. Moving to culverts, we have 1,100 culverts and 428 of those are on township roads. The state says anything over 25 square feet has to be maintained by the county. So you'll see us working on township roads a lot.
What about Chad, low water crossings? I know there are a few of those still on township roads. Do they become part of the township responsibility?
Low water crossing, so, so that 2020 linear feet is actually what should be there, not what is there. So a bridge, a low water crossing is considered a bridge by, by the flow and knowing that it should be a bridge. And I think in the original map I made for this, I said 8,900 traffic signs and that's wrong. It's, it's actually 8,900 traffic sign posts. So those diamonds are the posts. Each sign as you, or each post, as you can see, you know, three signs on the one in the foreground there, five in the back. So it's more like 20,000 or 30,000 signs. And those are on township roads at intersections. We help them with some different signage for site distance issues and that kind of thing, a lot of signs.
Do we produce the signage in-house?
We are able to. It's more effective to buy those. They're very inexpensive and they're very quick to get. And we keep a stock of all the standard stuff and then we can make something on the fly if we need it. And we recently switched everything to engineering grade, which means the reflectivity meets the highway standards. And, and we're really on, on spot on that, so.
Chad, if a township identifies a sign that's needed or if a sign gets damaged or something, do they just pitch that to your county crew and you take care of it? Or do you, does the township just get the sign and replace it?
They do their own, the signs, they're smaller culverts. It's all part of their road and, and they do that. Now, they might have some odd sign or if it's at an intersection with ours, then we take it. We help them a lot, but, and, and we're willing to just go anywhere and help them with a sign. But first answer is it's their responsibility. So just to quickly show some of the actual work and the folks doing it, this is our paving crew putting down a fairly long patch on one of our roads. I think this might be Hesper. We do have a really nice paving machine now. You all approved that about three years ago and there it is. Going to a completely different type of animal, this is one of our rock roads. So Route 460 is quite a bit of it is still rock. And our Rock Road Crew has some new motor graders that we bought just a few years ago. And they do a great job. If you are familiar with township roads and you're looking at this picture, you can immediately see that the county has a different standard for these roads. And that's because they're county routes. They're, they're meant to function at a higher level. There's our Rock Road Crew putting in a culvert on a gravel township road. And that was a few years ago. This was listed in the CIP and they got that done. Here's our bridge crew with some help from other crews, replacing a very large culvert on a paved township road in Walker Rusa. And we use a lot of precast boxes and our bridge crew has developed the ability and the equipment and the understanding to be able to do those kind of projects. And, and that's really helpful. It's a very efficient, cost-effective way to approach things. This project I wanted to highlight, we just did this last year and it's finishing up now. This is Route 1061 south of Highway 56. And we needed to replace several culverts. This is the biggest one in the foreground. We also raised this road three feet. For this project, the bridge crew went out, tore out the culvert, set the new one, graded all of the road embankment and ditches. The Rock Road Crew and the paving crew came out and handled setting up the pavement and placing the asphalt. The sign crew came out, set the grates, set the new signs. Our inspection crew came out and had a contractor strike the road. Our Parks and Vegetation Crew came out and seeded all the disturbed areas. And so that's one nice thing about having all of these teams is that we can really knock things out. There is our sign crew putting a retrofit grate on another location. They're really good at fabricating, so we give them some oddball tasks once in a while. But there they all are working just like Santa's workshop with their pretzel box on the side there. And here's our Parks Crew. This was two weeks ago at seven o'clock at night, taking delivery of our new ADA kayak ramp and pulling it off the truck and setting it in the water and hooking it up. There is what they hooked it to being constructed last fall. And we've got a combination of Parks employees and Bridge Crew employees handling that concrete pore. There's another project similar that they did right next door. It's a nice view of our ADA fishing dock, our swim beach is on the left and our community building in the back. There's our Parks Crew burning off the front lawn at the Public Works Facility. We've got a nice patch of two acres of native grass there. And here are fleet, a couple of fleet mechanics working on one of our dump trucks that, you know, we use those dump trucks for all of the snow duty, but then turn right around in the summer and all asphalt and rock and all kinds of things. They, they take a lot of abuse and they're working on the brakes there. In the background, you can see we've got one of our Rock Road Motor Graders in for shop, in, in the shop for maintenance. And you can see our nice shop there. Another shot of our fleet mechanics and this is Robert inside the engine of one of the dump trucks. And this is what our back lot looks like in the middle of the night during a snowstorm. A lot of activity, kind of a beehive. There's what it looks like in the daytime at the other end there, loading salt and sand. And of course, we use beet juice mix. And then at the end of the snow event, there's a lot of cleanup and it takes a couple of days to get everything washed off to try to extend life on equipment. This wash bay, by the way, was partially funded by KDOT so that it's insulated in the winter and they use it from their facility across the road. So looking at personnel real quick, I gave you the org chart, but I added some notes here for that. Well, for all of our snow events, we put people on 12-hour shifts. Here are all the folks that worked 12-hour shifts this year. You can see we really go across the organization with that work. We've got some inspectors that are inspectors that are able to drive trucks in addition to all our field guys. You might remember in January, we had a period of eight days where we had a pretty significant event and we totaled up at the end that that was $300,000. Most of that was personnel and salt. I talked about this CIP project a minute ago, you know, with all the different folks that were involved. And I just wanted to kind of highlight that in a similar manner. We switch to this kind of work in the summer. And that's really great that we can take all of these employees and mix and match and, and stay efficient and productive. For.
How do you evaluate and decide which projects can be done in-house and which things are contracted out?
It's, it's a fairly easy decision. We've got a certain set of tools. We don't want to put a crew on something that's going to be the only thing they do all year because it'll wipe out stuff that has to get done. And so we kind of size up things a lot. That happens on culverts quite a bit. We'll say, well, they could do this big culvert, but they're busy, it'll eat up the summer, let's contract it. And, and so it kind of pans out fairly easily. You know, bridges, we don't build major roadwork that's going to go for miles or involve equipment we don't have. Usually, we put that out to bid. And that's what we're looking at here. So here's a bridge that got replaced. And so this would be a contracted CIP project. And the folks that work on that then is it's a completely different group because it's administrative work and inspection work. And then just kind of on a similar note, you know, this is one of our favorite park projects that we did. And, and I just wanted to highlight all of the folks that came together in the department to make that happen. And that was kind of neat to see. So that's our personnel. I think I've covered what I really wanted to get to. I hope, you know, I, I wanted to make this thorough, but be quick. And there's a lot of, obviously, conversations we could have, but we're proud of the work we do. So thanks for this time. And I think we're going to, if we have questions.
So you mentioned that it took five years to get reimbursed for the tornado damage work. What kinds of projects? What kinds of costs did we incur with the tornado?
You know, we, we submitted, I, I didn't do it. We submitted a request for reimbursement for a lot of things. But one of our biggest was the tree removal and disposal. And we had to hire a contractor to mulch up all the trees that we pulled out of road. And we had to hire a contractor to mulch up all the trees that we pulled out of roads and ditches and bridges off of houses. And, you know, there was a lot of tree removal. So that was mainly what our dollars were. Other questions before we talk about the CIP?
Question on large equipment. Do you ever do a lease buy analysis before you purchase a new one to see if leasing cost is actually cheaper?
I haven't done that. I'm not aware of any that we've done recently, but I get the general sense that by using the state contracts for purchasing, that we're probably beating those overall costs. If there's a kind of a bizarre equipment that we maybe don't want to own when it's done, we may need to look at that, but we haven't bought anything weird like that in a long time. It's a good question. And, you know, next time we buy something, we could maybe answer specifically what those options would look like.
We've looked at it sometimes in the past, and I would say it also because of how we, to save money up to replace equipment, we can't, we can't use those funds by the state to pay a lease payment. So it would also be a different financing method for us. And oftentimes we're paying more in interest, and since we generally run things till they die, or they can't be maintained anymore, and then we can sell the equipment on Purple Wave and then recoup some of the costs. So it's generally more cost efficient for us to buy.
One other question. How do you tell the difference between a culvert and a bridge?
It's in the state statute. A bridge is a drainage structure that has greater than 20 feet of span measured on the center line of the road. And so you can take an 18-foot culvert and by putting it at an angle in the roadway, it becomes a bridge. But that's, yeah, the state defined that for all of us. And that gets to the National Bridge Inspection Program and puts it on a different list so that we can manage those very carefully. And we have the La Compton Kansas River Bridge in our system. It's a Douglas County bridge. Same with the Udora Bridge over the Kansas River. So we've got some very big bridges.
And those have both been attended to in the not-too-distant past, right?
Yes. We did the rebuild of the superstructure on the La Compton Bridge in the early 2000s, I believe. And then we did a polymer overlay on that about eight years ago. And overall, it's doing fine. The one that concerns me is, and it's not a safety concern, it's a budget concern, is the Udora Bridge. It's going to have to be addressed, and it'll be not in today, in this discussion, but in the near future, few years.
I just would say, Commissioners, we wanted to take a little bit of time right now to just sort of transition and talk a little bit about our capital improvement. I would call this a preview, not a CIP overview, but a preview to sort of, to talk about some projects. And I'm going to turn it over to Brooke, and our whole team is here to answer your questions on that.
Thank you, Sarah, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So we wanted to take this opportunity and kind of let you guys know about how we prepare and craft our CIP plan. I'll go ahead and get us started here. So each year, the Board of County Commissioners will adopt the five-year capital improvement plan. The first year of that program that we're adopting will align with the following fiscal year of the budget that we're adopting at that time. So this summer, you're going to see a capital improvement plan that spans 2020, that begins in 2026. What we're going to talk about tonight is the 2025 through 2029 plans. So it's very specific to that framework. The plan that we adopted last year, it reflects the county's commitment to enhancing our public safety projects, maintaining and replacing county roads and bridges. An allocation is made each year in the county's general fund to support these capital improvements in the fund. County staff transfers the allocation from the general fund, and then we split the allocation between road and bridge projects and facility projects. Typically, that split generally will be around 70%, 30%, but we will change that depending on the department's needs. So there have been years where facilities projects are really underway, and, you know, there's an additional need on the admin services side to support those projects. There have been years where road and bridge projects, there's additional needs that are realized there, and we'll shift that split depending on those departmental needs. So the philosophy for our capital improvement plan fund, the way we look at how projects are run through this fund, CIP projects are typically projects that increase the value of an existing structure or can be a brand-new structure, such as roadway improvements or additions to buildings. Capital replacement projects can include, but they're not limited to, the planned expenses for maintenance and repairs, or projects that restore value to an existing structure. So in 2020, you know what, I'm getting ahead of myself, Chad. I'm going to kick it over to you to talk about the Public Works overview on your projects, and then I'll come back to mine.
Great. So in that list, it's a very quick summary of what we looked at in 2024, as I had shown earlier. So we spent 4.4 million on projects. We received federal funds from KDOT. That's a pass-through fund that they manage of 343,000. And then the commission approved a transfer to the CIP on public works projects of 3.63 million. And then, as I said, our balance is 15.1 million, which is definitely high, and it includes 10 million for Waukesha Drive. And talking about the types of projects that we do, there's been a focus for many years on improving road safety. The FHWA did a study a few years ago, and the statement that comes out of that is that 23% of the population lives in rural areas, but 57% of accidents with fatalities occur on rural roads. And that's because of the high-speed nature of roads and the fact that they're often narrow two-lane roads and that the roadside hazards are very treacherous. So roadside safety, shoulders on the road, better sight distance, intersection improvements, these are all things that we're doing with that in mind. And it's work that we've seen lead to direct improvement in safety and reduction in fatalities on some of our roads. And, you know, that's important. You're hanging there, so I'll keep going. So shoulder and drainage improvements, I mentioned, annual culvert replacements. We, as I said, with 1,100 culverts, we've got to keep on top of replacing those, and they're telling us when we need to replace them. They're collapsing and they're, you know, culverts are smaller and we let them go farther, and sometimes they just go. So we're definitely doing those. Go ahead. And then obviously bridges. And as I mentioned, the National Bridge Inspection Program requires us to inspect those bridges every two years, and we use a consultant for that service, and we use that report to prioritize projects. And the idea is that we wouldn't want to get to a year in the decades ahead where 25 bridges have to be replaced that year. And they were in that position in the 1970s, and there was a countywide bond issued for that. That actually paid for the downtown Lawrence Kansas River Bridge, too. But we don't want to get to that point, and so the goal is, let's take our worst two or three bridges each year and replace those. You know, they may go another five years, but we don't want to let that pile up.
What's the lifespan, expected lifespan of the new bridges we're putting in now?
It's much higher than bridges that we built in the 70s. There are some structures from the 1920s, particularly culverts, that they'll be there, and if we don't touch them, they'll be there till we're all gone. But the bridges that were built in the 70s, there was a lot of, it was like a production process. There were some new KDOT approaches they were putting in place for details, and we're finding out all the flaws in those, and KDOT's well aware of all those. Our new details have addressed a lot of that, and we're building some really, really great bridges. The one in the picture is an example. That's Washington Creek on E-1000 Road. Those haunch slab bridges are just bomb-proof. I mean, they're going to be there for a very, very long time.
So I was looking at the 161 bridges replaced, two every year. Are they expected to last 80 years?
Yes. So on average, that would be where we would land, and that's what we've seen sort of on average. But as I said, we're, for some reason, replacing a lot of 1970s bridges right now, so.
Thank you, Chad. So over the years, Douglas County has committed substantial resources to upgrading and replacing aging infrastructure and government facilities and improving our public spaces. The projects that are in the capital improvement plan range from large-scale remodels to HVAC replacement and security upgrades in public facilities. In 2024, the project expenditure on the facility side was $8.2 million. From a revenue perspective, the facility side realized interest in rent revenue totaling about 1.1 million, most of that being investment income. We, like Chad said, his portion of his CIP transfer from general fund was about $3.6 million. The transfer to the facility side was about $1.5 million. The 10.7 million in year-end transfers is the sum of the 9.86 million approximately in general fund surplus, and then approximately $802,000 in special building fund revenue. So Douglas County worked in 2023 to consolidate funds and close some funds that we just, we could strategically put those in other places and consolidate our framework. And when we-
If I can interrupt a little bit on that.
Oh, absolutely.
The statutes allow us to have a levied fund for that special building, which is why we had it forever and ever. But you don't, you don't need to have a special fund to do it. You can do it in the general. So when we consolidated those funds, we just moved that mill levy authorization into that. So that's, the statute sometimes allows authorization for different mills, and so we just consolidated it to general.
Yes. So we realized the revenue from that special building fund closure in the year-end transfers in 2024. The CIP fund reserves for the facility side is 27.9 million at the beginning of the year. Most of that is slated for, or all of it is slated for projects in the five-year plan. So some of the projects that are coming to pass here on the facility side is, the biggest one is the Justice Center and Public Safety Building Construction. That project is going to total $82 million over the next five years, or actually over the next few years. We're still continuing courthouse renovations. We finished this room last year, and then we are going to move to other floors inside of this building and get that work completed. We've also got some projects at the juvenile detention facility and then corrections upgrades for the, some exterior projects at the jail, security systems, and then storage. We're replacing the HVAC system in a number of buildings, and then we're doing some elevator upgrades in the Justice and Law Enforcement Center after, perhaps after the expansion is complete. We're also going to be doing some park upgrades at Lone Star Lake and the fairgrounds. So the five-year plan, it'll outline projects for road bridges, facilities, and parks, administration and public works staff. We will provide a detailed cost schedule when we adopt the annual plan this summer. It's staff's goal to get that information into your budget books when you get that, when you adopt that formal allocation in Department 402. That way you have a plan, you know exactly what your, what allocation, what projects you're making the allocation to. The existing plan, like I said, it covers 2025 through 2029. Staff has worked very hard to integrate this capital replacement plan projects and the capital improvement plan projects into the capital improvement plan fund. The consolidation of this special building fund and all of the projects laid out in the five-year plan support transparency and is a GFOA standard and best practice. Over the next five years, the county will be investing $130 million in road and bridge projects and in facilities projects. And I've broken those down for you on the next slide. So for planned capital expenditures, facilities projects are projected to total about $99.3 million through 2029. This value may change as projects get added, things come up, but the plan as it stands today holds those dollars over the next five years. Road and bridge projects are projected to total about $36.7 million. Again, those values can change depending on needs. The staff also broke down the funding sources so that you Commissioners and the public could see how we fund these projects. So when I talk about CIP reserves, I just want to make it very clear that these are the planned transfers to the CIP fund, where Chad and I then divide and conquer, and then we develop a cost schedule based on the projects that are desired at the county. And so the CIP reserves are the funds that we've held year over year that we've planned and saved for, you know, like Chad said earlier, he's been saving for nine years for a project. So when we talk about CIP reserves, I just want to be clear that that's what that means. So on the facility side, we hold about 36% of the funding that supports this $99.3 million is in reserves. 55% of that will come from bond sale proceeds that we're going to learn about here in the next month and a half, two months or so. We also will realize about 7% in interest and rental income. That could swing wildly. And then we're expecting to get a couple of federal grants. As you guys may be aware, the State Historic Preservation Office is very passionate about this building and maintaining its historical essence. And so they have provided us with federal and state funding to support those projects as well. So Chad, do you want to talk about your road and bridge projects?
Maybe if I can interrupt just in there. This would have looked very different last year.
Yes.
So there would have been no bond sale proceeds in this. So those bond sale proceeds are exclusively assigned to the Judicial Law Enforcement Center and Public Safety Building Project. Go ahead, sorry, Chad.
No, it's great. The only thing I would add is that each year when we do an update within the Public Works CIP, it's a process of evaluating what dollars we've, you know, spent on projects and what the balances are that we have to work with, what our new priorities are. And then we prepare that document, and that's something that we're going to be doing the next few weeks, and you'll see that in mid-June, I think. And, you know, that's really the point where we can have a debate, if you'd like, about, you know, why is it this project instead of this one, and what's the philosophy? So that's something that I always look forward to doing.
Commissioners, this is my last slide. I don't have any additional information to provide to you about the funding and the funding sources breakdown. I'd like to stop sharing my screen and then open up an opportunity for you guys to ask questions of staff on the facility side of the capital improvement plan process and
This might be a little granular, and I know we'll get to all of it later, but I was at the Kenwaca Township meeting last night, and there was some conversation about the Farmer's Turnpike Bridge, which I know you'd kind of stepped that up as a priority because it had been damaged. Is that still in progress, or have there been any hiccups?
It is in progress. We put that project out to bid in March, and we received no responses. And so the issue we have at the moment is that with the SLT work, the Panasonic-related projects, ARPA-funded work, our contractors are telling us, we just can't get to that. And so the project is not happening this year. It's happening, we hope, next year. We're going to, the plan is put it out to bid in the summer with a calendar completion in 2026, hoping a contractor sees that as something to work with. I've already notified all the Lakeview business owners- I've already notified all the Lakeview business owners about that change because they're going to be impacted by that. And yeah, it's still a priority. The bridge is fine, it's just time to get it done.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Well, thank you. Go ahead.
I just always find the road and bridge conversations really fun and kind of identifying the pictures, like, I think I know where that is. So I think it's really monumental and important work, and I like talking about it.
We're going to bring back a conversation on pavement maintenance programs in a couple weeks so we can extend that conversation, so.
Tight your calendars, everyone. Thank you. Really good presentation, too. I want to commend you. The maps are very helpful. I always love the pictures of our capital projects, especially seeing our valuable staff out there doing that great work. So thank you for that. All right, if there's no other questions, we are going to recess until our 5:30 business meeting. Commissioners, I might mention one thing before we recess. There's a walk-on item. If you did not check your agenda today, there's an extra item. So in between, if you want to do a little reading, you might want to think about that. Okay, thank you.